Good evening. This is the regular city council meeting for Tuesday, March 1st, 2022. And this evening, we will start by opening the meeting, and I open the meeting at this point. We will take a roll call of the members of the council, and we have one individual who will be working remotely.
Doug Glasper?
Present.
Jay Frank?
Present.
Barbara Bynum?
Present.
J. David Reed?
Present.
I don't believe we have Mr. Russo present yet, and Grace Hodges.
Present.
So all our city council members, except Anthony Russo, are present, and our youth council representative is also present.
All right, and Anthony will be online?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we accept that. If you would all stand, and let's do the pledge allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit, and to the Republic, for which stands our nation, our government, and our citizens, with liberty, and justice, and for our home.
Thank you. We have the pledge, we have the roll call out of the way. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there are. We will be striking item number eight from the agenda tonight, the youth council application.
All right, thank you. At this time, we will have a call for public comment for any non-agenda items. If someone would care to speak on a non-agenda item, please do so at this moment. And do we have anyone online?
No, but Mr. Russo has joined us.
Pardon?
Mr. Russo has joined us.
Okay, very good. The next item, mobile home park re-appellidation. I kind of got those mixed up, but that's okay.
I'm happy to introduce this item. We are joined tonight by Rich Dana, who's the owner, one of the owners of three mobile home parks in our community, Cottonwood, San Juan, and Green Acres. And you met Mr. Dana in August when he came before council regarding his mobile home park permit. He sought permits for those three mobile home parks that I just mentioned, just prior to purchasing them. And the city also, in addition to approving those mobile home park permits with variations, agreed to contribute funding to the project, a total of $500,000 towards the project, with $200,000 going towards the removal of mobile homes specifically to contribute to the removal of hazardous asbestos and other materials, and then $300,000 of ARPA money in order to help with the new water and sewer infrastructure in these mobile home parks. And Mr. Dana and his team have been hard at work in the mobile home parks, and he's here to present some updates to you and to the community about what's been going on and what's yet to come. And so, thank you, Mr. Dana, for joining us tonight, and please let us know if there's anything you need on our side, but if you're able to share your screen, you can do so, otherwise Amy's got it here.
I think I can share my deck from here. Let me get this, sorry about that. Okay. Can everybody see that okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, thank you all for having me this evening. Dana and I were speaking, and we thought it was a good idea to give everybody at the city an idea of where the project currently is and how things are going. So this is just an update for the mobile home parks. As you may recall, there's really three mobile home parks. There's Cottonwood, there's Green Acres, and there's San Juan, for all intents and purposes. We have merged Green Acres and San Juan, which are contiguous. You know, beneath the surface, all the new infrastructure goes between the two parks. So, for all intents and purposes, moving forward, and from a tax assessment perspective, with the Montrose County Tax Assessment, we are effectively combining those just to be one entity. So here are updates as of today. In regards to the Cottonwood Mobile Home Park at 1600 Locust, we have abated all the asbestos in the abandoned mobile homes, and then in turn, we tore down all 21 abandoned mobile homes. We, on this north end of the park, right here, where it says long-term parking, there was a makeshift dump. And then, we have done about 80% of the tree trimming. There's a vacant house that was on this corner here, labeled number one, down the corner of Locust Road and E Street, which we've completely renovated and rented. We've added new picket fencing thus far along Locust Road and along E Road, and we've updated our office and our workshop as well. So if you look at this map here, the orange pads are occupied, the green pads are vacant, and then, right where my cursor is, this road right here, and this road right here, I'll give the credit to Chief Hall for this suggestion. One of the big problems with this park is that it was really challenging to get through it from an emergency services perspective, and so we did add these two new roads to the park. And this road is somewhat open right now. I don't think we've taken down the fence yet for this, but the mobile homes have been removed, and all we have left to do is take down a little fence, and those will be done, less the paving. Examples of what we've done so far, I included some pictures in here. This was a pretty common picture of what the mobile homes looked like. We had, in the Cottonwood Mobile Home Park, we had 21 vacant mobile homes in various states of disrepair. A lot of homeless people had been squatting in these. In all honesty, we sent through crews of people with garden rakes after we were done, and we would probably find, per day, three or four or five used hypodermic needles, a couple cracked pipes, a lot of drug paraphernalia. This has all been cleaned up, along with the trash. And then we would come in, in the upper right-hand side, you'll see that's a mobile home that has had the asbestos abated, and then, in the bottom right, you'll see what that mobile home pad looks like right now. And that would be consistent with all 21 mobile home pads that we took out of this This is one of the two makeshift dumps. This was on the north end of Cottonwood, just a before and after. One of the problems we have in Cottonwood in particular, on G and F Road, is that the parking is somewhat tight. Some people have trailers, and that they don't use every day, and so what we will eventually do is allow them to put some trailers and other vehicles they're not using on a regular basis, park it here, obviously not to abandon it, but if they have additional vehicles, this would be a place that they can additionally park, along with all the extra parking that we're adding. So this dump has been removed. This is the house right along Locust Road and on the corner of Locust and E, and this is an example of what that home looked like at the time that we purchased the property. It was boarded up, there were homeless people squatting in it, they had pretty much removed all the copper piping from within the house. So we came in, we put in an entire new HVAC system in, obviously redid the plumbing, a lot of the electrical, flooring, paint, carpet, all new windows, and then, obviously, the outside landscaping of the house, as you can see, was also updated. And this is a nice entrance to E Road now. It looks much better than it did at the time that we purchased the property. Other examples of things we're doing in Cottonwood include tree removal. This particular tree on the left was huge and dangerous and mostly dead, and thank goodness, we got it cut down before branches fell on anybody. And then, on the right-hand side, you just get to see the examples of the new fencing that we're putting up. This white picket fence here on the top is E Road, and then on the bottom is along Locust, and that goes all the way from E Road all the way out to the new, what is now the park, which will be redone here before we're finished up. This is San Juan Green Acres, and T Road would be the Green Acres, and then San Juan's going to be looping around here, U Road and V Road. Again, all the asbestos has abated in the 25 abandoned mobile homes. Additionally, we had nine apartments, which looked like two old motels, and they probably were at some point. In addition, we had two cottages, and those have all been removed from the park. This park, like the last park, had a makeshift dump in the back, and that would have been up here on this part right here, which is pads 55 through 62. That's been cleaned up. The other thing that we've done on this particular park is removed all the steel gas lines that ran all the way along T Road, out here to pads 71 and 75. We also had steel gas lines running along the first 160 feet of V Road. Those have all been replaced, working with Black Hills, and new meters as well, and we've moved the bollards to sit in front of the new meters. So all the old dangerous steel gas lines have been replaced. We're about 25% done with the tree trimming in this park. We're finishing up Cottonwood first, and then, we will begin doing tree trimming in this park to follow the excavators that go down T Road, which is where we're beginning, or where we began yesterday. There's some dangerous playground equipment that we've had removed, and we've had some problematic residents evicted from this park. Again, a pretty similar example to the other mobile home I showed you, an abandoned mobile home on the left. On the upper right, you can see that we have done the asbestos abatement, and then ultimately, the mobile home was removed from the property. There's the dump in the upper left, and then, on the lower right, you can see what it looks like now. Pictures of the new gas lines that went in on T Road and the front of V Road, and those have been completed, those have been filled back in, and it's just a road again, but that's what it looked like when we were doing the work. And then, I'm sure you probably have all seen these two old apartments/motels, as well as what we always refer to as the Pepsi shed in the middle, because there was a Pepsi machine right in front. And then, as you can see in the lower pictures, those have all been removed. This picture was taken about, oh gosh, 10 days ago. And we were able to save all those big beautiful trees, and those trees have been trimmed up. So I think we're going to be able to save all of them when this is done, and those trees are sure not a nice addition to these parks. So, here's what we have upcoming, beginning as of yesterday. If you drove down South San Juan, you saw my excavators in the middle of the road, and we're tying into the new sewer lines. New sewer, new water, and new hydrant lines will be done at the same time, getting three trenches down the streets. Additionally, over the next couple of months, we'll be adding streetlights, improving the emergency access that I showed you earlier in Cottonwood, also the back loop of the San Juan Green Acres Park. New playgrounds with pavilions, new mail kiosk in San Juan and Green Acres. We're going to update the community entrances, make sure that we have bollards in front of every gas meter, one of the biggest problems the city had with the emergency calls. In addition to the crime, was responding to situations where somebody had hit a gas meter with their car. We've increased and improved the off-street parking, and then ultimately, the last piece of the puzzle is going to be the road paving. I believe we're discussing scheduling a time with the asphalt company to come in in September, and that would be the last piece of it, would be to bring in the asphalt company in September, and we should hopefully have it wrapped up by then. And then, as far as community building, my property manager, Chris Dennis, with Monument Ridge Property Management, has done most of the communication with the police department, although I have met with Chief Hall, and we are, I think we're in a much better spot. We still have a few possible situations we've identified that we're keeping an eye on. And as far as community rules and enforcement, we have towed all the vacant cars. We have sent out two or three letters to the tenants so far. I would say that I'm probably 12 months out from completely successful enforcement of the community rules. One of the biggest ones is a lot of residents there still have a lot of just stuff on their pads, and it's, that's not going to be an overnight fix, and those people that have been there an awfully long time with an awful lot of stuff. And I'm a little hesitant to come in with a hammer and just really, you know, be the evil new landlord. We're trying to work with them to get cooperation, and that's the way that we would prefer to operate the parks, could ultimately get them looking great. I know Chris has been working with social services, and there have been a few residences in the park that have had some challenges getting their rent together, and so I know that Chris is working with the social services and other charitable organizations to help them pay their pad fees. And then, as promised, we're not doing anything with the pad fees for the residents for two years, and so all those rents and pad fees will remain the same during this period. And then ultimately, once we get the paving done, we have discussed doing resident engagement events, probably in September, October, we will be able to put something together. And then, the other thing we'll do is we'll begin to bring in new tiny homes and mobile homes, and begin to improve the Montrose housing stock from an affordable perspective, affordable by size, and, you know, and really help alleviate some of the housing shortages within Montrose. And I have spoken to Ann about what needs, Montrose is having, whether we should be looking at three bedrooms, two bedrooms, one bedrooms, a mix of all those different various types of housing units within the parks, and I think we will probably end up doing some sort of mix within the parks. A big thank you for everybody who has been involved in this so far. It's gone very well from a working relationship perspective, and obviously, a big thank you to the five of you for gifting me the money that was really necessary to make the project financially viable. Also, a big thank you to Ann Scott and Chief Hall, who have all been fantastic in helping through the process. Ann has been just incredible to work with, and I just want to say that I think Montrose is incredibly lucky to have her. There have certainly a number of times in the due diligence process where I was just overwhelmed with the complexities of the project, and she just helped me get through it, encouraging me, and helped me through the details. And Scott, as we worked through the civil plans over the last three months, really pushing hard to get those done. Scott was incredibly helpful in making sure that happened in a really quick manner. And then Chief Hall and the police department for really helping us enforce the rules and the laws within the parks and keeping an eye out for everything. And then also, a thank you to DeCresis with Monument Ridge, Justin and Hannah with Abel, Jamie with Alpine, and Randy and Chad with Mesa. Everybody's just done a fantastic job, and I, part of the reason for the success to the project to this point has been everybody else who's been involved in the project. So just a big thank you to everybody. I don't know if anyone is online tonight watching, but I just wanted to give a big thank you. So that is the project in a nutshell, and if you have any questions, I'm glad to answer them for you. And if you ever would be interested in having a walk-in tour of the parks, I'm always glad to do that as well, anytime.
All right, thank you. Do you have any questions?
I don't have a question. I just have one brief comment, and that is, Mr. Dana, I'd like to thank you for what you're doing. I think this is a wonderful example of what private development and the city working together can do to increase the beauty of our city, to take care of blighted properties, and increase the housing opportunities for our citizens. And I don't look upon this as a gift to you so much as I look upon it as a gift to the community, and I appreciate your being the catalyst to make this happen, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I would also say that not so much of a gift as an investment, and that this is going to be a model for, I think, cities and communities across the state, as far as a way for cooperative agreements and arrangements between a developer and municipalities can work and work well. And I, for one, am very proud to have been involved in this project, even in the small way that we are.
Yeah, I would say the same thing. I think this is a tremendous asset to get these areas cleaned up, and I'm certain our police department would be more than happy to see all this when it's completed. So thank you very much. Ann, do you have any comments? Bill?
No, I don't have anything else to add, and thank you, Mr. Dana, for the kind words for all of us, but also for all of the work. And we're obviously all still working together on this project. There's still a lot of improvements that are going on, and our staff continues to be deeply involved in the water and sewer installation, and of course, ensuring that all of that work is completed before the new mobile homes are installed, which is sort of the next trigger point for this project.
All right, thank you.
And actually, Doug, I do have a question. I know I'm online, so it's tough to remember I'm here. But yeah, my question is, when does that, when do we look like we'll be finished or complete with the project as far as being able to move some new folks in there and move forward?
The hope is right around September. I'd like to be rolling in new homes the day after the asphalt's laid, and I'm actually out shopping for manufactured homes right now. I'm also meeting with a tiny home company in Montrose. So I'm looking at, you know, at various options, but I would anticipate in the next 30 days, I'll place an order for the first 20.
I have a follow-up question to that, Mr. Dana. Are those then ones you're going to purchase and make available for rent, and is there any opportunity for folks who want to buy a mobile home and then do the land, or are you going to be the landlord on most cases?
That is a question I don't have an answer for yet. I think it's going to just kind of depend. You know, a number of folks in the parks have sold their homes during this period, and there hasn't been a high value put on the homes within the parks that are existing. I don't know the viability of which way is going to make more sense at this time. So I don't have an answer for your question yet. I think we just need to see how it goes and see if there's a demand for homeownership. I have been watching another park that its model is just purely to develop the park, put the mobile homes on, and sell the mobile homes. And the last time I looked, and I will concede it's been 30 days, the sales appeared to be going, I think, a little slower than maybe they were anticipating. And so, I, you know, I want to get the housing stock on there, and it will somewhat also depend on my partners, but, you know, I think that the initial stage will be to put the first five or six on, rent them, and just get a feel for what the demand is and which way we're going to go. My guess is it'll probably ultimately be a mix somewhere between the two.
All right. Any other questions? Staff, any questions? All right. Thank you very much for the information and the update. We appreciate that.
Thank you very much. Glad to give it to you anytime.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda this evening is item number seven, approval of the minutes of the February 15th regular city council meeting. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the minutes of the February 15th, 2020 regular city council meeting as presented.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Please vote.
I have to do roll call votes.
Oh, that's right. Let's do a roll call.
Doug Glasper?
Yes.
Jay Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Bynum?
Yes.
J. David Reed?
Yes.
Anthony Russo?
Yes.
We have a unanimous vote.
All right, thank you. Item number eight was removed, so we will go on to item number nine, ordinance 2563 on second reading, and this will be presented by Assistant City Attorney Matthew Magliano.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, and members of the public that may be present via Zoom. I'm here on a second reading on proposal to extend the citywide moratorium on adult gaming arcade uses. This would, if adopted, extend until September 21st, 2022, expiring and auto repealing the first minute of September 22nd, 2022. The proposal also seeks to repeal and replace the definition section of MC 4-14-1, specifically to modify the definition of adult gaming arcade. That was defined by heavy resource to state law definitions of slot machines within our state constitution, as well as state statute, as well as simulated gambling device, which is also in our state code. This was presented at a first reading on February 15th, a clean version with the recital clauses, the whereas clauses appears on pages 15 through 24 of tonight's session packet, and a redlined version appears on pages 25 through 31 following. There have been no changes between first reading and this one. As a second part of this presentation, staff is requesting authority from this body, city council, to communicate a formal request to the Office of the Attorney General for the State of Colorado to obtain a formal written AG opinion, or at least written guidance from that office's revenue section, which oversees their limited gaming, on the legality of the gaming devices or mechanics of play on offer to the public by the adult gaming arcade establishments we have here under Colorado law, as well as whether, as a second question, a home or municipality like ours may lawfully enact a ban by ordinance and co-regulate in this area with the state. So that's before you tonight, so prepare to take any questions. Thank you.
All right, David? Anthony, any questions?
I just want to thank Matt and the team for all the hard work they've put into this. I know it's been a difficult trek going through this, and there's been some challenges along the way, so thank you for all the hard work.
Thank you. I would entertain any comments from the public. And we have none, then I would consider a motion for adoption.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance 2563 on second reading as presented.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. We'll have a roll call vote.
Doug Glasper?
Present, and yes.
Yes.
Barbara Bynum?
Yes.
J. David Reed?
Yes.
Anthony Russo?
Also present, and yes.
We have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. The next item is ordinance 2577 on second reading, and this will be covered by Assistant City Attorney Matt Magliano also.
Thank you. Good evening again. I'm here on a second reading of a proposal. This one is to repeal one discrete provision in Montrose Criminal Ordinance 6127, underage possession of tobacco, cannabis, and paraphernalia section. The proposal seeks to break the existing ordinance apart, to add a new section 6126, underage tobacco and paraphernalia possession, and to repeal and replace 6127, underage cannabis and drug paraphernalia, with revisions made to the definition sections on both. A redlined version appears on pages 42 through 49 of today's session packet, clean version on pages 34 through 41. There's an introductory memo that is on pages 32 through 33 of tonight's packet, and it covers, in summary, the proposal fairly well, as well as the staff rationale. This was discussed at a work session held January 3rd, I was brought back January 31st, and then first reading held February 15th. There have been no changes made to the proposal since its first reading. Prepare to take any questions.
Do you have any questions, council? Grace, do you have any questions on this one?
No.
All right. Anthony, any questions?
No, I'm good, Doug.
All right. I would accept any public comment, if we have anyone who's cared to comment on this item. I have nothing in local, nothing online. In that case, I'll consider a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance 2577 on second reading as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Let's have a roll call.
Doug Glasper?
Yes.
Jay Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Bynum?
Yes.
J. David Reed?
Yes.
Anthony Russo?
Yes.
Mayor Glasper, we have a unanimous vote.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. The next item is ordinance 2581 on first reading. This is going to be by Ross Valdez.
Good evening, city council mayor. Appreciate your time today. We just went over this code modification during our last work session, or actually, there were work sessions a couple weeks ago, and so I won't go into all the nitty-gritty details, but I'll give you the highlights. The code amendment that we're considering today increases solutions available to help individuals and families experiencing homelessness or at risk of homelessness by allowing supportive housing as a conditional use in the following zoning districts. That's going to be OR, Office Residential, B3, General Commercial District, I1, Light Industrial District, and I2, General Commercial District. The code currently does not allow for facilities that have ongoing onsite supportive services and housing for those experiencing homelessness or at risk of homelessness. The proposed definition of supportive housing specifies that this use is not on an emergency or nightly basis, and therefore does not include facilities that are commonly referred to as homeless shelters. Occupancy of supportive housing is intended to be long-term, and that's with stays of 30 days. with stays of thirty days, uh, consecutive days or more. This code modification provides, uh, uh, additional definitions for barriers to supportive, uh, sorry, barrier or barriers to employment and housing stability, onsite supportive services, skilled nursing facility, and assisted living facility to further distinguish supportive housing, uh, uh, from those uses. This code amendment, um, oh, another item is that nursing care facilities and assisted living residences are licensed by the state of Colorado, uh, as such, and are separate from supportive housing, just as an additional clarification. This code amendment will make an important clarification in our code in order for supportive housing developers to understand the allowed locations for this type of use. Uh, and as we mentioned, uh, during the work session a couple weeks ago, uh, this is, uh, has been a product of, um, conversations with different organizations in the community, uh, and a demonstrated, uh, uh, interest in clearly defining where this use is allowed.
All right. Thank you, Russ. Any questions for us? Anthony, any questions?
No, I'm good, Doug. Thank you.
All right. In that case, we'll hold a hearing, uh, open the hearing. Do we have anyone who would like to speak to this item? Anyone online? All right. In that case, we'll close the hearing, and I would consider a motion to pass the ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, I move to pass ordinance twenty-five eighty-one on first reading as presented.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call, please. Yes.
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 All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Russ. The next item is item twelve, ordinance twenty-five second seventy-eight on second reading. This will be presented by Will Reese.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, of course, this is the second reading for the ordinance which, uh, codifies the process of the appointment of an alternate member of the Historic Preservation Commission. Uh, there are no changes since the first reading, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
All right. Does anyone have a question on this? Anthony, any question?
Oh, no, I'm good. Thank you.
All right. And I would point out, I believe this was a change requested by the city council.
That's correct.
All right. Are there any persons that wouldn't like to make a comment on this? Any public comments? Seeing none, I would consider a motion.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance twenty-five seventy, twenty-five seventy-eight on second reading as presented.
Second.
I have two seconds and a first. That's good. Roll call, please.
Doug Glassbell?
Yes.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Bynum?
Yes.
J. David Reed?
Yes.
Anthony Russo?
Yes.
We have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. That passes. Item thirteen, ordinance twenty-five seventy-nine, this will be presented by our senior planner, Amy Sharp.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, I'm going to, as I did at the time of the first reading, going to recuse myself to, to the potential of conflict of interest in that I represent the individual involved.
All right, sir. Do you, how much time do you need to get out of the room?
With a bum knee, you might need, need a little bit more time.
All right. Amy, thank you, if you would.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. So as you mentioned, this is the second reading, so you guys have heard this once already. Um, so I'll kinda do a shortened version of the presentation, and then you can always ask me questions if you need clarification. Um, this rezone is located just south of Ogden Road and just east of the recreation center. It's approximately seven-point-three acres in size, and the request is to rezone this area from R-two low-density district to the R-three A medium-density district for future development of multifamily housing in this area. Um, the next slide talks about the rezone criteria, which I know you are all familiar with, but if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them. Um, the R-three A medium-high-density district is intended to provide an area suitable for a variety of housing, which ranges anywhere from single-family homes to multifamily housing. In our comprehensive plan, this is listed as residential mixed-density low in the future land use map. Um, but our comprehensive plan also identifies a lot of land use and housing goals and objectives that we feel, um, this project helps to meet those goals and objectives. I won't read through all of these in detail either, as I'm sure it was discussed during the first reading, um, which I was absent for, um, but it's also in your packet, too. Um, there were also several changed conditions, which was one of the criteria for, um, rezones, so we highlighted a few things that have changed since this area was initially zoned when it was annexed. And staff finds that the proposal does meet our rezone criteria, um, the intent of the R-three A medium-high-density district, and is also in compliance with our comprehensive plan, um, their goals and objectives. It's compatible with existing uses in the surrounding area, and we are recommending approval of the rezone. The planning commission also recommended approval back on January twenty-sixth. That'll open it to any questions.
Any questions? Anthony, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
All right. Is there anyone in the public that would care to comment on this? Seeing none, I would accept a motion for adoption.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance twenty-five seventy-nine on second reading as presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. A roll call, please.
Doug Glassbell?
Yes.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Bynum?
Yes.
Anthony Russo?
Yes.
All present voted yes.
All right. Thank you. That passes unanimously. Item number fourteen, uh, I think David can come back in now.
Doug, would you like me to walk out and get him?
We gotta see Mr. Murphy participate in high jump.
All right. Item number fourteen, ordinance twenty-five eighty on second reading, and this will be William Reese.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, city council. Um, as you know, this is the second reading for the designation ordinance for the S.H. and I building, which is located at four-twenty-eight East Main Street. Uh, this building is eligible for inclusion on the city's historic register due to, uh, its association with events that have made a significant, uh, contribution to history. Uh, it is, of course, associated with the development of downtown Montrose in the early twentieth century. Uh, it's also significant for its connection with, uh, an association with Samuel H. and I, who was a prominent Montrose rancher, businessman, and civic leader. And it is also eligible due to its, uh, uh, characteristic architecture of the twentieth century commercial style. Um, nothing has changed since the first reading, um, on this application, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
All right. Any question, council? Anthony, any questions on this?
I'm good, Doug. Thank you.
All right. In that case, I would entertain a motion. No, wait, let me ask for any public comment. Do we have any? No one. All right. I'll accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance twenty-five eighty on second reading as presented.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Doug Glassbell?
Yes.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Bynum?
Yes.
J. David Reed?
Yes.
Anthony Russo?
Yes.
Anthony, could you repeat that, please? We couldn't hear you.
No problem. Yes.
We have a unanimous vote.
All right. Thank you. And that passes unanimously. Item number fifteen, the Niagara Road addition annexation, and that will be staff planner, William Reese.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I have a presentation. I'll just pull up here quickly. Uh, and I'm actually going to discuss items fifteen and sixteen together this evening, but note that these are two separate, uh, two ordinances and a resolution. Um, and so I have brought the Niagara Road addition to work session on January eighteenth, and we did bring this to the planning commission for the initial zoning hearing on February ninth. Uh, tonight is the first reading, and we will bring this back, uh, before you on March fifteenth. And so this is the general vicinity map of the parcel to be annexed. This is located along the northern half of Niagara Road, approximately centered on Saint Mary's Drive, the intersection with Saint Mary's Drive. Uh, the piece is approximately zero-point-four-five-six acres. It is within the city's urban growth boundary, the city of Montrose Water Service Area and the city of Montrose Sewer Service Area. The area is urbanizing, and the entire perimeter is contiguous to city limits. Uh, the piece is entirely surrounded by B-two Highway Commercial District zoning. Uh, this is intended to provide for business oriented towards serving the motoring public, and it provides for the convenient exchange of goods and services along the major thorough fairs of the city. Um, the regulations for the zoning of additions are set forth in section four-four-twenty-nine. The planning commission made a recommendation for B-two Highway Commercial District, uh, which staff finds is not adverse to the public health, safety, or welfare. And this is the annexation plat. Uh, this piece being annexed is along the northern half of the right-of-way, and it's a, it consists of a rectangle approximately forty feet by four-hundred-ninety-six and two-thirds feet. Uh, according to our comprehensive plan, this area is listed as residential mixed-density low, which provides primarily for single-family homes as well as small amounts of attached residential dwelling units. Uh, it's located within Growth Area One, uh, which includes unannexed small enclaves such as we have here. And so in summary, the area is urbanizing, and the piece is entirely contiguous to city limits. The city is the applicant, so an annexation agreement was not required. This proposal is consistent with the public health, safety, and welfare, annexation policies, and the comprehensive plan, and staff recommends approval of the annexation and of the B-two Highway Commercial District zoning. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions, council? Anthony?
I'm good, Doug. Thank you.
All right. Are there any, uh, persons who would like to make a comment in the public? Seeing none, I would consider a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt resolution twenty-two-two-dash-zero-five as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Doug Glassbell?
Yes.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Bynum?
Yes.
J. David Reed?
Yes.
Anthony Russo?
Yes.
Mayor Glassbell, we have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Next item is ordinance twenty-five eighty-two on first reading, and I believe Will, are you handling that one also?
Uh, yes, but I have nothing further to add. Thank you.
All right. Any additional questions on that one? Anthony, any questions?
No, sir. Thank you.
All right. In that case, I would open it up for a public hearing. Is there anyone who would care to speak to this one? Seeing that, I'll close the hearing, and I'll consider a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass ordinance twenty-five eighty-two on first reading as presented.
Second.
I have an emotion and second, I have a roll call.
Doug Glassbell?
Yes.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Bynum?
Yes.
J. David Reed?
Yes.
Anthony Russo?
Yes.
Mayor Glassbell, we have a unanimous vote.
All right. Next item is sixteen, ordinance twenty-five eighty-three on first reading. William Reese.
Thank you. I have nothing further to add, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Any questions, council? Anthony?
No, Doug, I'm good. Thank you.
All right. I'll open a hearing. Is there anyone in the public that would make, care to make a comment? Seeing none, I'll close the hearing, and I would accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move for adoption ordinance number twenty-five eighty-three on first reading as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Could I have a roll call?
Doug Glassbell?
Yes.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Bynum?
Yes.
J. David Reed?
Yes.
Anthony Russo? Anthony Russo?
Yes.
Mayor Glassbell, we have a unanimous vote.
All right. That's unanimous. Item seventeen is the Meyer addition annexation, and that'll be senior planner Amy Sharp.
Great. Thank you, Mayor and City Council, once again. I do have a presentation for this one as well. So you guys have heard this one, um, once or twice now, I guess now. Um, we do have a few changes, so I'm gonna give my presentation with a few changes from the last time. Um, this one is located just north of Locust Road and west of North Hillcrest Drive. It's approximately fourteen-point-six-seven acres in size, and as you can see here, um, there's some city-owned, or not city-owned, but is within adjacent to city limits to the east and a little bit to the south, so it does meet our annexation requirements. And annexation agreement is also required, which is, uh, normal for this type of a development, and it will allow for future housing development in this area. The zoning of the surrounding area is R-four high-density district to the right, and, and then there's some R-two low-density district to the south, and then the area that doesn't have any color, um, kinda to the southwest and north of this is all agricultural and still within the county. Their initial proposed zoning was R-four high-density district, and at the planning commission meeting, um, the applicant changed their request to R-three medium-density district, and it was approved, or not approved, but it was recommended for approval by planning commission at that last meeting for the R-three medium-density district. Um, on this next slide, I just wanted to provide an overview of what the differences is between R-four and R-three, and the primary difference is that R-four allowed for multifamily residents, and R-three allows for single-family homes and duplexes, um, but it also does give the developer the ability to do multifamily housing in the future if they wish, if they do a conditional use permit, so, um, that's why they changed it to R-three. This is the annexation map for the property. And then in the future land use plan, this is listed as residential mixed-density medium, which fits well with the proposed zoning for this area of R-three. It also meets several of our, um, land use and housing goals and objectives as found in the comprehensive plan. Once again, this is pretty lengthy, and I think that we reviewed this in the past, so I'll let you read that in your packet, and feel free to ask any questions if you want, but, um, it does help to meet a lot of our goals and objectives in our comprehensive plan. This is located in Growth Area Two as well, which just means that there is some level of infrastructure, um, nearby existing in the area. In summary, it does meet our annexation policies, and annexation agreement was required, as well as an annexation impact report, which has been delivered to Montrose County. The proposal is consistent with public health, safety, and welfare, our city annexation policies, and the comprehensive plan, and therefore staff is recommending approval of both the annexation and the R-three medium-density district, and the planning commission also recommended approval of the R-three zoning at the February twenty-third meeting. With that, I'll open it to any questions.
Any questions, council? Anthony?
No, I'm good, Doug. Thank you.
All right. I would accept public comment. Do we have anyone, um, wanting to make a public comment? In that case, I would accept a motion on resolution twenty-two-two-oh-six.
Mr. Mayor, um, I would, we're on twenty-two-oh-six, yeah. Um, I would consider making a motion to adopt resolution twenty-two-two-oh-six as presented.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Doug Glassbell?
Yes.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Bynum?
Yes.
J. David Reed?
Yes.
Anthony Russo?[1695.14] Mayor Glassbell, we have a unanimous vote.
All right. And the second phase of that is considering a motion to adopt resolution twenty-five, uh, eighty-four on the first reading. Ordinance, I mean, yeah, you're right, ordinance. Counsel, do you have any comments or questions on that one? Any comment? Anthony?
No, I do not, thank you.
In that case, I will open it up for a hearing. Do we have anyone who would like to speak at the hearing? Seeing none, I'll close the hearing, and consider a motion, ordinance twenty-five-eighty-four.
Mr. Mayor, I move for adoption of ordinance twenty-five-eighty-four on first reading, an ordinance in the city of Montrose for the annexation of the Meyer addition.
Second.
I have a motion, second, roll call, please.
Doug Glassbell?
Yes.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Bynum?
Yes.
J. David Reed?
Yes.
Anthony Russo?
Yes.
We have a unanimous vote.
All right, thank you. Item eighteen is ordinance twenty-five-eighty-five on a first reading, and this is with the, uh, zoning of the property. Amy, would you like to make any additional comments?
I have nothing further to add.
Counsel, any questions? Anthony, any question?
No, Doug, thank you.
All right. In that case, I will open it up with a hearing. Is there anyone in the audience would care to make a comment on the zoning? Seeing none, I'll close the hearing, and I'll consider a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass ordinance twenty-five-eighty-five on first reading as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, roll call, please.
Doug Glassbell?
Yes.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Bynum?
Yes.
J. David Reed?
Yes.
Anthony Russo?
Yes.
Mayor Glassbell, we have a unanimous vote.
All right, thank you. Item nineteen is Home of the Brave preliminary plat. Senior planner, Amy Sharp.
All right, thank you, once again. This property is located on the, kinda the north side of town, so it's north of Highway fifty and along North Mesa Road. The property is approximately thirty-nine point four acres in size, and it's called Home of the Brave. It's a residential, um, subdivision that has a hundred and forty-eight residential lots, mostly made up of single-family homes, um, it would be a hundred and sixteen single-family lots, and then thirty-two duplex lots, bringing the total to a hundred and eighty dwelling units, and then they're also proposing a clubhouse and a park within the subdivision as well. Um, this is zoned as R-three medium-density district, so both single-family homes and duplexes are allowed in this zoning district, and this is the same zoning as what was done when it was first annexed in two thousand, so nothing has changed as far as the zoning goes. These are our standard subdivision review standards, as found in section four-seven-five of our code, um, we've gone over these, uh, many times in the past, so I won't read through all of those as well, and just leave it as, um, if you have questions on any of the specifics, please let me know. To note this too, is the comprehensive plan and municipal code are two separate documents. Our comp plan is not a legally binding document, but it gives us guidance for zoning and other land use decisions, while as our future land use map and the comprehensive plan also is general and can have somewhat flexible, um, locations for where different types of housing and development should occur. And then the municipal code provides really specific, um, land uses and densities, this is where we will look at, um, lot sizes, dimensions, and those types of things, um, in order to ensure that it meets all of our development standards. In our comprehensive plan, this is listed as residential mixed density medium, um, which does allow for a variety of housing raising, ranging from single-family homes to duplexes and triplexes, so it fits, um, nicely within our future land use map. As I mentioned, this is the R-three medium-density district, which allows for single-family homes and duplexes, so it is in line with the zoning as well, um, this is a use by right. This next slide shows what the dimensional requirements are as far as the minimum lot sizes for single-family homes, and then all others would be the size of the duplex lots, and so it does meet all of those requirements, and that also shows what the minimum setbacks would be for those different types of, um, lots. Next is the actual plat, the first page is all the certificates and the plat notes associated with this preliminary plat, and then the next slide shows, um, the layout of this subdivision, which is pretty standard, um, the clubhouse and the park are kinda down in the lower right-hand corner. This next slide shows the phasing plan, they propose to do this from basically south to north. Staff finds that the preliminary plat is in compliance with our subdivision regulations and the comp plan, and also meets the intent of the R-three zoning district. The planning commission did recommend approval of this preliminary plat on February ninth, and staff recommends conditional approval, um, of the Home of the Brave preliminary plat with the standard condition that we place on all of our preliminary plats, and just ask that you include that in your motion as well. With that, I'll open it to any questions.
Any questions, counsel? Anthony, any comments?
No, Doug, thank you.
And I, you know, it seemed like we're going through these kinda fast, but I would point out that all of these have been discussed at the work sessions in the past, so we've, we've been through this on several occasions before. I would accept any public comment. Seeing none, I would ask for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the Home of the Brave preliminary plat expressly conditioned upon city staff ensuring that all policies, regulations, ordinances, and municipal code provisions are met, and that the applicant adequately addresses all the staff's concerns prior to execution of the final plat. The city staff is not authorized by this approval to execute the final plat prior to all conditions being satisfied.
I have a motion, I have a second. I have a motion and a second, roll call, please.
Doug Glassbell?
Yes.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Bynum?
Yes.
J. David Reed?
Yes.
Anthony Russo?
Yes.
Mayor Glassbell, we have a unanimous vote.
All right, thank you. Item number twenty, Riverbend RV Park travel home park permit. Amy Sharp.
All right, so this one's gonna look a little familiar to you guys, you actually just approved a travel home park permit for Riverbend RV Park just a few months ago, and it's coming before you again tonight because he has asked to revise his site plan to add a few more additional sites, and in order to change the site plan, it has to be approved by city council once again. Um, so this is located down by, um, Jopita Lakes, I think all of you know where that's located. The planning commission, this went before them, and they should also approve or deny the travel home park permit, and they did approve it, um, back at the last meeting that they had, not the last meeting, but it was at the, I'll have to look it up to see which date that was for sure, sorry. Um, but the biggest change in this is that the updated site plan is going to allow five additional RV-only sites on the west side of the property, so that's the only change that's being made. Um, because of that, additional conditional use permits and variances were not needed for these five sites, so back when they did their initial site plan, we did have to go through some different variances and conditional use permits, as some of those sites were located within the uncompragory river buffer zone. These five sites are not located in that area, they're all on the west side of the property, and doesn't fall within that area, so they did not need to do any additional, um, CUPs or variances. Here's the site plan, and I kinda did a big arrow to point to the area that had the biggest change, so as you look at these, um, sites, yeah, my arrow does work, um, going north and south, right in here, these were all made to be a little bit smaller, and so he was able to fit five additional sites in here, and so they have to meet a minimum size, and they did meet that minimum size, and so after he got done with his site plan, he was able to tell that he was able to squeeze in a few more in order to provide more services and expand his park, so that's the only change in the site plan. So as I mentioned, the planning commission does review the site plan, and she'll approve or disapprove of the application, and then, um, it also comes to city council for final approval as well. Staff finds that the site plan does meet all the requirements set forth in our municipal code for travel home park permits, and the planning commission recommended approval on February ninth. With that, I'll open it up to any questions.
Any comments or questions? Anthony?
Yes, sir.
All right. I would accept any public comments. Seeing none, I will consider a motion to approve.
Mr. Mayor, I move, excuse me, to approve the travel home park permit for Riverbend RV Park as detailed in the staff res- report. The request does meet the code criteria and standards based on the evidence and testimony presented at this hearing and in the staff report.
All right, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, could I have a roll call?
Doug Glassbell?
Yes.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Bynum?
Yes.
J. David Reed?
Yes.
Anthony Russo?
Yes.
Mayor Glassbell, we have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item number twenty-one is a lot replant, and this is going to be Scott Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me. Um, so no changes from the work session, but I'll just do a quick overview for anybody who's joining fresh. Uh, before we started the Woodgate realignment project down by Walgreens and US Bank, uh, there was a house that happened to come on the market that we purchased, um, that was immediately adjacent to the project, um, this was geared towards, we knew that we needed some of the land for, uh, future roundabout there, but also to minimize impacts from the construction project, it was a good opportunity for the city to purchase that property. Um, we have purchased it, and then for the long-range, uh, plan in that area, there would eventually be a roundabout there, which requires a pretty small sliver, um, not much bigger than that table, um, to be, uh, dedicated as right-of-way for a future roundabout at that intersection. Um, while we own it now is a great time to get that cleaned up, um, so this plat amendment essentially dedicates right-of-way, uh, for that future use. Um, typically, these are small enough that these are handled at a staff level, but in this case, um, the city is giving up, you know, fee title property to dedicate as right-of-way, you know, we use it both ways, but just kind of a formality, um, because we're technically giving up land to be used as right-of-way, um, the mayor would be the one to sign it, so, um, um, with that, uh, it's about as deep as that one gets, happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Anthony?
Yes, sir.
I would accept public comment, if we have any. And there is no comment coming from public, I would accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the Lot A replat of McKinley subdivision amendment number one plat to include dedication of rights of way and easements for the future construction of a roundabout at the intersection of East Oak Grove and Woodgate Road.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, do I have a roll call?
Doug Glassbell?
Yes.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Bynum?
Yes.
J. David Reed?
Yes.
Anthony Russo?
Yes.
Mayor Glassbell, we have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item number twenty-two is the Niagara and Hillcrest Roundabout Design Contract, Scott Murphy.
Speaking of roundabouts, um, so a couple of years ago, uh, we did the main traffic study on the Hillcrest corridor, identified, um, roundabouts as a long-term solution for all of the major intersections there. Um, we've since completed Sunnyside and Hillcrest over the last several years, um, or, yeah, Sunnyside and Hillcrest, and Miami and Hillcrest, and Niagara's was the last one of that, um, report. Further kinda moved up the line, uh, by some recent traffic studies that have been performed for, um, so that some development in the area have kinda identified that within three to five years, um, this intersection will be approaching a, uh, a lower level of service due to large volumes and queues that we would anticipate with continued traffic growth in the area. Um, so to stay ahead of that, um, in line with our capital plan, um, we're working, this starts the design process for that roundabout. Um, so, design of a roundabout includes, you know, all the utilities, all of the, you know, conflicting utilities, grading, um, survey, property acquisitions, things of that sort, um, would all be part of this design contract, the acquisitions themselves would be separate if we need to buy little portions of corners, um, which are pretty typical on roundabout projects because they have a larger footprint, and, uh, um, to that end, we put out an RFP, um, for design, uh, because of the specialized nature of that, we did it, uh, as qualifications-based, um, selection, um, rated the contractors, and then from that, uh, went into negotiations on contract price for design. Um, through that process, uh, we're recommending award to Felsberg, Holt, and Ullaveg in the amount of, uh, one-eighty-three, four-twenty-two, fifty, um, and it, I'll just note that they were the designers on the Miami and Hillcrest roundabout, um, and that one went great, it was, we have great experience with them, so, um, very comfortable in making this recommendation. And, uh, the timeline on the project, so design, um, would happen this year, um, towards the end of the year, we'd hope that we'd have the footprint finalized, that we can start on, um, any property acquisitions that may be necessary, and that would set us up to go into construction, you know, within that three-to-five-year recommendation, um, kind of, as, as we go into budget season, we'll know what the cost is and how that fits with other capital priorities and, and, uh, can plan accordingly, so, um, not necessarily scheduled for construction at any, by any means at this point, um, just getting it shovel-ready, um, so that we can pull the lever when we wish to. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, counsel? Anthony, any comments?
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to point out, this was a budgeted item, I believe, for this year?
Correct.
And if we do construction, it would probably be in twenty-three?
Um, it's kinda up to how the budget process goes, um, you know, as we go into each budget year, there's, we stack this among other capital priorities, look at revenues and see what we wanna tackle, and, and maybe it'll be twenty-three, maybe twenty-four, twenty-five, it will, kinda, depends on what the wish of the community and the council is.
All right. I would expect, or, uh, accept public comment on this, if we have any. And we have none, I would take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to award a contract to Felsberg, Holt, and Ullaveg in the amount of one-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand, four-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars and fifty cents for completion of design studies and civil design associated with the Niagara-Hillcrest roundabout project as presented.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second, could I have a roll call?
Doug Glassbell?
Yes.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Bynum?
Yes.
J. David Reed?
Yes.
Anthony Russo?
Yes.
Mayor Glassbell, we have a unanimous vote.
All right. Next item is item twenty-three, pavement marking contract extension. Public Works Manager, Jim Scheit.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counsel. Uh, so yeah, this recommendation is to extend a contract with Stripe Lot, um, to stripe our streets or perform pavement marking. Um, this is a, a service we contract out every year, and, uh, typically would redo all of our long-line striping, um, many of the crossbars, stop blocks, uh, things like that. This is a, uh, budgeted, uh, item that we budget every year, and this year was budgeted a hundred and seventy-five thousand, and so we would, um, utilize this contract up to that amount. Um, there was a price increase on their end that they passed on through their vendors, um, which was included in the packet to, uh, show that increase. But with that, nothing has changed since we discussed at work session, so I take any questions if there are any.
Any questions, counsel? Anthony?
No, sir.
All right. In that case, I would accept public comment? Do we have anyone who would like to speak to this? All right. I would consider a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the extension of a pavement marking contract with Stripe Lot Inc. for the not-to-exceed amount of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, roll call?
Doug Glassbell?
Yes.
Bill Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Bynum?
Yes.
J. David Reed?
Yes.
Anthony Russo?
Yes.
Mayor Glassbell, we have a unanimous vote.
All right, thank you. Item twenty-four, staff reports. Do we have any comments? Bill? Ann?
I have a comment to make. Tonight is Amy Sharp's last council meeting, working for the city of Montrose, and-
This is very sad, by the way.
It's incredibly sad, and I'll, I'll keep my comments short because I am sad. Um, Amy's moving on to work for the US Forest Service, and they are incredibly lucky to have you, Amy. She was one of many applicants for this position, and Bill and I knew as soon as she told us that she was interviewing, that she was gonna get it, because she's so incredible, and, um, sometimes jokingly behind the scenes, we call council meetings, um, the Amy Sharp Show, because she has all of the items on the agenda, and if not all, nearly all, and tonight is a really good example of that. She had a lot of items that she's working on wrapping up here for the city to make sure that she leaves us in a good spot, and then her team members also had items that, um, they've been working on and that they presented tonight too, um, and so, Amy, you've been a great leader for the organization, a really excellent colleague, and thank you for everything you've done. The really great thing, I think, about, um, this kind of work-from-home scenario is that we get to keep her in our community, so Amy will still be here in Montrose, um, which is the best part, so Amy, thank you for everything you've done.
We don't, we don't have to hold a public hearing on that, do we?
I think I'd have to ask Amy.
I would say, we've, we've never, we've never said it's the Amy Sharp Show behind the scenes. We flat-out say it.
I just wanna- I just wanna say, it has really been a pleasure working with you guys, um, just getting to know you and working with you on a regular basis, I have truly enjoyed it, the city is really lucky to have the leadership and guidance that you guys provide to us as staff, as staff, both from the City Council and our City Managers' Office. I'm going to miss you guys just as much. So, I really appreciate you guys. The staff here is wonderful, and it's been a wonderful place to work, too. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thanks for leaving behind a comprehensive plan that's going to guide us for the next 40 years.
Thank you, Amy. You know, working on the planning commission and then on City Council, it's been a great pleasure to work with you, and I want you to know, if we did have to come to a vote, I probably would have voted no.
I think it would have been unanimous, just saying.
Any other staff reports, Scott?
I can give a couple of quick project updates, if you'd like. So, the waterline project that's going in on Townsend, proud to report that all of the Townsend mainline work is complete. So, all of the, you know, kind of main north-south lines work now is focusing on reconstruction of the, or reconnection of all the laterals and boring underneath Townsend at all the side-street tie-ins. So, still a ways to go, but, and there'll still be some lane shifts in place associated with that work, but I think the heaviest lifting is done. With the warmer weather this week, you know, so with all those cuts brought potholes and trench materials beating out stuff, especially with the snow, this week's weather is bringing great opportunity to try and get ahead of that and get a lot of that cleaned, cleaned up and get a patch in there, a temporary patch that will actually stay. So, they'll be working on that pretty heavily this week to get it as smooth as it can be in a temporary basis. Obviously, when the hot plants open in the spring, it'll all get completely milled out and repaved, and then CDOT will come in the summer and do their mill and overlay, and we'll hopefully never know we were there.
I have a question. When you, when you do those lateral tie-ins, those are not open trenches or boring underneath? I mean...
Yep. So, what they do is, you have a pit at each end where you'll, to drop the equipment in there to then bore across. So, yeah, it's trying to not have that impact to the mainline Townsend, and, sorry, we still have to close the side-streets, but the portions underneath Townsend, pending any unknown, you know, waterlines or conflicts that get in the way, would all be trenchless.
Okay. So, like, are you saying right now, as we're driving up and down Townsend, north and south, that you guys are boring underneath Townsend?
Yeah.
So, worst-case scenario, do you think, I mean, what if you do have to open something up? What's the...
So, we have contingency plans in place, yes. That's, that's, that's the kind of stuff that we think about at night. So, you're boring alongside old AC lines that are brittle and aged, so the potential always exists for, you know, something to go sour or an unknown line that, you know, so what we do is expose every line that we need to cross ahead of time, so that we know it's there, and a lot of times even try and leave that open so that you don't transfer stress as you cross over it. But stuff that's been in the ground for 60-plus years, things can sometimes happen. In that case, we get everything set up so that in an emergency situation, you know, we're not scrambling to shut it down. There's, you know, usually one valve that we're relying on, and usually you have a valve key on that valve, and so if something happens, we can quickly turn it off to make it from getting worse, because sometimes, you know, a geyser can create problems, especially in the middle of Townsend, and then kind of evaluate from there. So, if open cut were to be necessary, the requirements with CDOT only allow closure of one lane at a time in each direction. So, one lane of travel will be maintained no matter what. If we need to, if we did have to go in there and dig, we would do it, you know, half at a time and kind of leapfrog or flip-flop traffic around that way to make sure that there is traffic continuity.
Okay.
It's a great question.
So, what you're saying is, every day when I drive to the high school every morning, there's a chance that I could just fall through the road?
Not if I'd go that far. We, we work to make sure that that doesn't happen. Let's see, other projects. So, the southeast transmission main, which is a big 24-inch dedicated fill line that runs from 6,800 in Sunnyside to 6,700 in East Oak Grove, part of that goes through Fox Park. It's kind of rare in this day and age with labor and materials and all that that we get to say this, but that project is going better than anticipated and faster, to the point where they actually think they might try and do Fox Park this spring. Originally, we told them they couldn't do any of that work in the summer because we don't want the impacts to the park and its users, plus it'd be pretty messy with all the sprinklers coming on every night. But we gave them allowable work windows on each side. Initially, they were thinking that was going to be in the fall. They are gonna, looks like they are going to try and go for it, as best we can tell, here this spring. So, you'll see some work starting in Fox Park, and that is a change from what we had announced earlier that that was going to be in the fall. So, they're, that's all targeted to be completed and reseeded by mid-April, and then they'll keep it fenced off while the new grass takes, takes hold, and ideally by peak summer. Everything's, hopefully, won't even know we're there. And, and then after that, that product will fall back and fill in the gaps on each side. It may all be done in 2022, which is great. And then Woodgate realignment, so still waiting on the utility companies to relocate, the third-party communications utility companies out of our control, to relocate those cabinets that have been in the way of the road. Kind of good, good-ish news to report on that front. They've been there every day for about a week and a half now and are actually starting to splice. So, we are seeing movement on it. We don't have a, a date yet where we can start and go in. We're going to make sure that they are 100% done before we close the road and go in and do our perks. We don't want to get to a portion where we've removed Old Woodgate and are waiting on them and can't reopen, and then we're stuck with that detour in the interim. So, and encouraging, as soon as I get dates, definitely we'll, we'll pass that along as well.
Just to point out that this is something that, if we had done this project completely in-house, that would have not changed anything because of this third-party communication, the amount of data points and such, they would have had to still come in and do all of this.
Yeah, it's, it's their utilities. We're not allowed to touch them. They're, you know, communications utilities, I think 1,600 wires or something that they have to splice four different times. And, yeah, so, we engage them, we engage them through design. They've been, you know, known about it and working on the design, and we actually even helped them with their design to try and move it along for over a year and a half now, and just kind of at their mercy, and they're finally showing up, thankfully.
Do you think it'll be done in time to be a viable alternative to Townsend once CDOT comes in this summer?
Uh, yes, if things go well. Yep, yep. And the thing about CDOT's product is they're going to do, because it's peak travel season, they're going to do most of their work at night. So, their product should be relatively low-impact. But, yeah, if someone's looking to, you know, during the summer, you have milled surfaces and stuff that people might not like, rocks flinging up, things of that sort. Yeah, that, if with this in place, you know, if all goes well, I'm hesitant to put out a date, but if all goes well, we should be done ahead of CDOT mobilizing, or, you know, mobilizing in mass, they might be, you know, kind of chipping around at the edges of their project, but, yes, it's, I mean, it's, if all goes well, it'd be this spring that it'd be open. Not going to give a date yet because just some things are out of our control.
I, I got a quick question for you. I know we got a lot going on on Townsend and then a lot of the other arteries that are out there, major arteries that are out there right now, improvements. I know people have been asking questions about some of the potholes on Townsend and some of the other issues that have developed through the winter. Is the reason, is that one of the reasons why they're still there is we're kind of waiting to get through with some of the bigger work that has to get done, and then we're going to focus on the, the minor repairs that need to happen along the way?
So, on Townsend related to the waterline product, a lot of what you're seeing is, you know, so they've trenched through, they put in flowable fill, which is like a lean concrete, to come back to the surface, but especially when it rains, a lot of people drive over, you know, town, that stretch of Townsend, you know, 15,000 vehicles a day, it can beat out and get worn out pretty quick in those conditions, and so they're out there almost daily restoring those surfaces to get them through construction. Because we can't repair those trench cuts and potholes, which, you know, are core holes where we've had to find those utilities to make sure we don't hit them, or to find them to tie into them. There's really no way to permanently patch those until the hot plants open around Easter, and so we have to continually put temporary patch on those throughout the winter. And again, this, this week, you know, what we put in this week should stick a little better than what was put in last week, because last week, everything was wet and icy, and things just don't stick that well when it's wet and icy. So, a lot of the work is kind of focused on maintaining that continually until the permanent, our permanent patch, which will come as soon as the hot plants open in April, and then to be followed by CDOT's overlay of the road. But at the end of our permanent patch, it will be smooth and, and, I mean, even in a, in a stable condition even without the overlay. The overlay is icing on the cake.
Thank you, Scott.
Any other questions? Grace, anything? Any other items, Scott? Jim? Chief, would you like to...
Wait, I have a question for Jim. Because he, I mean, just on the potholes, because you did a really good job explaining a little bit at work session, but since we're already talking about it, can you just talk about the pothole work that's happening all around town and not just on Townsend?
Yeah, definitely. There's potholes more than just on Townsend. And, and so the others, that's definitely something that City Street Cruise is focused on this time of year especially. We're, we're on it year-round, but at this time of year, we're on it basically every day, at least three days a week. And it's because of the time of the year. Freeze thaw cycle is popping any small repair on the street out, and sometimes on a daily basis. So, yeah, our crews are out putting down a cold patch or, or a mixture of sorts that we may be trying as a different material to use in a pothole repair. And, and like I said, we're out on a daily basis. The Better Montrose app is a great way to pass on those, those potholes to us, because we don't see them all. There may be some smaller streets that we don't see them, and the quickest way to get them to us and make us aware is through that app. And then that hits our crews' to-do list basically for the day right away. So, it kind of bypasses a few steps to use the app. And like I said, we're out on almost a daily basis fixing those and kind of doing a temporary fix. The pothole repair is a, is a temporary fix. The, the larger fix is a, a street improvement of, of certain types, and, and that's where we, we need to larger street projects to fix those.
And Ann had a quick update at our work session concerning that Better Montrose app. Ann, could you fill in the public on what's going on with that?
Yes. And this information is straight from Ross Valdez. I think if I misstate anything, you'll let me know, right? Okay, thumbs up. So, Ross has been working with the developer of our Better Montrose app, and they made some updates to it at the end of 2021 that resulted in the app not working well on Android devices, if at all. And so unfortunately, that has persisted. So, right now, if people download the Better Montrose app, likely, if you have an iPhone, it's going to work well, and if you have an Android, it might not, unfortunately, right now, and our staff has been working on trying to get that fixed with the developer. However, everyone can use this app online. So, if you just Google "A Better Montrose App," it's the first thing that should come up. Another way to find it is to go to cityofmontrose.org, and under Departments, there's Innovation and Citizen Engagement, and there's a link to go to the Better Montrose app. And you can use that online, just like you can use the app. So, you can go on and you can tell us where there's a pothole or any other issue, submit a comment, and then it filters to the correct department, and we get right on it.
And I would say, I drive around town at this time of year, and I use my Better Montrose app to report potholes. And in the worst-case scenario, it took a day and a half for city staff to come and fix that pothole. So, this is a great way of reporting and dealing with those potholes rather than complaining to your neighbors on Facebook.
And, and Ann, I think you and Ross will be working on getting some information out to the public via the message boards and also the city website, telling them how to do this, correct?
Yes, and Ross, actually, and our OBT team have a video on cue about the Better Montrose app. We've been a little reluctant, honestly, to push that out while it doesn't, while it's not working well on Android. We'd really hate for people to see that it's an app and try to download it on their phone and then have it not work and perhaps get frustrated by that. So, Ross and the OBT team are strategizing about how to share that message, because we want people to use it and we want it to be usable, and just the reality is, over the last year or so, things have been strange. This is one of those things that's just not quite back. But yes, I guess, my long story short, yes, we're working on continuing to share this information about the useful Better Montrose app.
Thanks.
I have one other project update. So, you may have noticed the new traffic signal on Main and Townsend. It's in place now, it's not on yet, but it will be soon, or, sorry, Main, Main and Nevada, sorry, thank you. Anyway, it is, it's in place, coming soon. You'll start to see it'll, it'll be flashing yellow and red for a few days before it comes back into operation, and there will also be new ADA ramps and concrete sidewalk placed around the corners in that intersection, and that'll take a few weeks to complete that, but coming soon, that light will be completed.
And I think we discussed that that's one of our two lights in town.
Right, one of two. Yep.
But the city helps.
Correct.
Just to be clear.
Jim, we end up with potholes sometimes on Highway 50 or 550 and Highway 90. Do you have any comments on how best to handle those?
Yeah, the ones in the core of town, the City of Montrose does have an agreement with CDOT, and we maintain the potholes in the core of town, even though those are CDOT right-of-way. So, depending on where it's at, and, and the Better Montrose app is still the best way to report that, because even if it's not in our area, we can pass that on to CDOT. But on the outskirts of town, CDOT is responsible for their own pothole repair. But again, the Better Montrose app is a great way to report that either way.
Does that apply to if someone like, someone contacted me this weekend about a missing stop sign, but it was actually outside of the city? But I pass that on to the county, the Roden Bridge Supervisor, and so if they use the Better Montrose app and it's outside the city but in the county, do you guys funnel that to your peers at the county?
Absolutely, yes. Yeah, and, and we have easy contacts with the county or CDOT, whomever it may be, and can pass those on easily.
Thanks.
Anything else, Jim?
Nope.
Any other questions for Jim? Anthony?
No, I'm good, Doug. Thank you.
All right. Chief Hall, would you have, like, to make any comments?
Mr. Mayor and City Council, thank you. Hopefully, I can get all these dates right. Just a reminder, tomorrow night and every Wednesday for, until May 11th, from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., we'll be hosting our Citizens Police Academy. Currently, we have 18 students. When we started advertising, this is, actually, we took a break for two years because of COVID, and we almost immediately got 18 students, so the class is full. We're really excited to teach it, and we'll be ongoing with that. Secondly, we will be hosting the Latinx Citizens Academy. We're still advertising for students for that class. That will be taught in Spanish, and that starts April 12th. There'll be three of those classes, April 12th, April 19th. I'm sorry, April 19th, April 26th. I, I knew I was going to be challenged on these dates, one way or another.
No, that's not me.
No problem. April 12th, April 19th, and April 26th, from 6:30 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., childcare will also be offered along with food service, and that will be taught at Motta. And then just an update on our Summer Police Academy in partnership with Colorado Mesa University. We're currently in the advertising phase now to get cadets for our Summer Police Academy, which will start on May 9th. And you can pick up an application both at coloradamesa.edu/monroes or cityofmontrose.org, our website. And I want to show you this really cool picture. I wish I could put it up here on the big screen, but I can't. And so, that's Officer Jeremy Payne and two very good-looking kids. Not sure whose kids those are. I was pictured in this, and then they airbrushed me out. So, you'll probably see this on a banner above East Main Street, and then on Instagram, Facebook, and also up in Grand Junction, perhaps along North Avenue. So, we're really pushing hard to advertise for our Summer Police Academy, and, and I don't think our partnership with CME right now couldn't be stronger. So, it's excellent.
What's your age limit on that? I'm talking on the low end.
We have a minimum age limit of actually 20 years old. So, as long as you turn 21 while a cadet in the academy, then you can attend the Police Academy.
Thank you. Would you like to comment on the meeting that we had the other evening?
Yeah, we had an excellent meeting last night with a, the Trail Blazers organization, which consisted of, I would have to say, probably about 25 youth and some adult, similar to a Boy Scout troop, and the mayor and I went, were invited to present at this, this event, and I was amazed at the, the kids and the questions they had. The questions that they had weren't actually for me. Normally, I show up at one of these events and I get asked about the taser and the handcuffs. All the questions mostly were for our mayor, and these kids were some of the smartest kids I think I've ever met and most engaged in asking our mayor about things like the airport and the developments at the airport, mayfly, street improvements, things that I would normally expect to get questions addressed to the mayor at, like, the forum. So, you might have some more comments on that.
I just thought they were extremely engaged with us.
Yep.
It was interesting looking at the questions. I didn't see any parents handing notes to them. They seemed to have come up with this on their own. It was just really a very, very positive experience, I think, for both of us and hopefully for them.
It was a lot of fun.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt, do you have anything?
Dad?
All right. In that case, how about Youth Council? Would you have an update for us?
Um, right now, we're kind of in-between projects. We're trying to work with Montrose High School with our counselors, because something that I feel like the high school's been struggling with for a while is our school counselors, and so we're just getting information about that. We're, our end goal is maybe to go to school board and relay our needs for, not better counselors, we have good counselors, but just either more or them having more time for us with college planning and all kinds of other stuff. One really cool thing that we just found out about last week is Columbine has started kind of a youth city council. They don't really have a name yet, and it's just like, I think Kaylee said, like 10 kids that have come together, and they're just getting started, which I thought was really cool. We're hoping to partner with them once they've actually are on their feet, and then they'll hopefully feed into our program as youth city council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I don't think so.
All right. In that case, City Council comments.
Yeah, I mentioned this at the work session, that I just received notification that I've been appointed to the State Opioid Abatement Council, and it's... been appointed to the State Opioid Abatement Council, and it's really kind of a very proud moment for me to be able to represent Western Colorado. We're one of 12 people in Colorado appointed to this council, and it's going to be great to give Western Colorado a voice in some of the distribution of the opioid abatement funds. And I'll be meeting with Chief Hall and a few other members of our community to start looking at what are the best solutions for the opioid abatement monies.
Barbara, anything? Anthony, do you have any comments?
No, sir, thank you.
All right. In that case, I would take a motion to adjourn. I have a motion to adjourn. Thank you, folks, for coming.
Thank you, you guys have a good night.